If I should.
Yeah, I do. Um, the other two times that I had it, I knew, I mean, this is all right. The first time.
What's wrong? It might be out of place, because there is.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It's now ten o'clock, so we can go ahead and call this Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Dennison to order. Verify we do have a quorum present, so we will move then to Public Comments section. At this point, has anybody filled out a request to speak card on the general?
Okay.
All right. We will have, for any of the items on the public hearings, you can do, choose to speak at that time. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the Public Comments section and move to the Consent Agenda. Any comments, questions, discussion for any of the items on the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion and make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Minutes are approved or consent agenda is approved. All right, now we will move to the Public Hearing section of our agenda today. And on any of these items, if you wish to speak, whenever you do approach the microphone, please go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please. And that being said, we'll move to item four A.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots two R and three R, Block A of the Cary Stubbs addition, case number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine zero RP. This is a aerial of the subject property. Currently, the two lots front on Davie, and this is the proposed replat. The applicant is requesting the replat in order to front the two lots onto Harvey rather than Davie. This property is located in the ETJ, and staff does recommend approval of the request. And I'm present for any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? Is the applicant here?
I don't see the applicant. I'm sorry.
Would anyone like to speak in regards to this request?
Chris Noah, Preston Trail Land Surveying, seven eight seven west FM nine nine six Potsboro. I prepared the replat. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this request? Is there any questions for the, for the surveyor?
Is that, how is that area zone just?
It's ETJ.
Yeah, it's, it's located in the ETJ, so it's not within the city limits.
That's what I thought. I wasn't sure.
All right. Any other, any other, anyone else wish to speak on this request? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Any discussion among commission members or questions? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion on this matter.
I'll move to approve the proposed replat.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion is approved. We will move on to item four B.
Item four B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to amend the current planned development overlay district standards in ordinance five one seven four to allow for development of commercial multifamily, single family, and town home uses on approximately one hundred and sixty-three acres, located, generally located south of US Highway seventy-five, west of State Highway ninety-one, and north of Randell Drive, case number twenty twenty-two dash zero eight five PD. This request is for some amendments to the current PD for Hills of Texelma. It's a planned development that came before this commission, I believe, back in December, and it was approved by, recommended approval by this body, and then approved by City Council. Applicant has come back for amendments, one of the main amendments, to be, in order to change the local retail use that fronts on State Highway ninety-one to commercial. And there are, there are several other uses, and we've provided comments to the applicant on September first, and as of last Friday, we hadn't received any comments back. So after talking to the applicant, staff and applicant are requesting that the commission table this request until the next planning and zoning meeting, which is on September twenty-seventh. That way, we can flesh out those concerns with the applicant. And I'm present for any questions.
Any questions of staff? All right, so, staff does recommend tabling, but is there anyone who would like to speak on this request at this time? All right, then I will close the public comments section of that. Any further discussion among commission members? We did, we did receive some mail-in information, which we're supporting. There was a note about wanting a traffic light. Obviously, that is not something the city is directly in charge of. That's a text dot matter, which hopefully will be addressed, but that's a little bit out of the city's control for, for that intersection, since it's a state highway. Other than that, any further comments?
Yeah.
Then I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to table four B.
I have a motion, but I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, that, that will be. Table to the twenty-seventh, is that correct? Yes. Okay. Table to our next meeting. All right. Then we will move to item four C.
Item four C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to amend portions of chapter twenty-eight of the zoning ordinance to include section twenty-eight point nine non-conforming uses and structures, section twenty-eight point twenty-one, single-family twenty, twenty-eight point two, single-family ten, twenty-eight point three, single-family seven point five, twenty-eight point two four, single-family five, section twenty-eight point two five patio homes, section twenty-eight point two two F two family, twenty-eight point three MF one multifamily, section twenty-eight point three two MF two multifamily, section twenty-eight point three PD, planned development overlay district, section twenty-eight point four nine use chart, and section twenty-eight point three definitions, case number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine six Z O. Ms. Phyllis Geral.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Phyllis Geral. I'm a consultant that the city is engaged to assist with several planning items, and I'll, I'd wish I could say my staff report is shorter than the caption, but I can't today. But we are asking the commission to consider a number of amendments to the zoning ordinance that deal primarily with housing, both infill and getting prepared for the larger subdivisions, master plan communities that we think the, the city will start to see coming in, in the future. So, but a lot of these have been discussed with the commission and City Council in a couple of joint meetings back in July and August. We also had a meeting with some of the local builders on September thirteenth to review the proposed amendments and to get their feedback. And today, we are recommending that you take action on the several amendments, but also to table action on four of them, that we would like to take additional time for more research. And I'll come back to those at the end of my presentation. But I'll briefly review what we are asking the commission to take action on today in terms of the amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first is require enclosed garages for duplexes. And the current ordinance requires two parking spaces for each duplex unit, but not an enclosed garage space. And staff is recommending that we begin to require one enclosed garage space and then one open driveway space. And this aligns with the requirements of the single-family five district. We are recommending one garage space. We think that this option should help to reduce the opportunity for the entire front of a duplex to be comprised of garage doors. The next amendment would, is reduce front yard setbacks in single-family and duplex zoning districts and regulate garage placement and paving in the front yard. We are trying to both standardize some of our parking requirements and setbacks, as well as lessen the impact of garages and driveways on the streetscape. So there's several amendments that we're proposing. One is to reduce the front yard setback in single-family and duplex districts from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, but require the garages to be set back twenty feet, twenty-five feet. So this means the garage could never be located in front of the house. You would have to at least set it back five feet, and we think this will eliminate the ability for someone to do what's called a snout house for the garage is just all the way out in front of the house, but really, again, to reduce the impact of garages on the streetscape. What this does do, and I think is a benefit to builders, is it reduces the front yard setbacks, which are now twenty-five feet fairly uniformly in your single-family districts, to twenty feet. We're proposing to require a minimum twenty-five foot setback from the property line to the face of a garage door for front entry lots and corner lots, and this would apply to all of the single-family duplex districts with the exception of the SF five lot, which is only typically only fifty feet wide for corner lots. And in that case, we would require only a minimum twenty-foot setback for corner lots, where you have a garage centered from that side street. And this proposed amendment is to lessen the opportunity for vehicles to overhang and block sidewalks, give us a little extra room to hopefully keep the, the cars and trucks from overhanging. We're proposing to limit the percentage that garage doors can comprise of the front facade of a house to fifty percent and only allow two garage doors to face the street. And these amendments would lessen the impact of garage doors as viewed from the street, especially on narrow lots, if provided the third garage could be located in access from either the side or the rear of the property. So we're seeing more and more of the desire for three-car garages, but you could still do that. It's just the third garage would have to be located where the door isn't facing the street. The next amendment is to allow a maximum of fifty percent of a front yard to be paved between the front property line and front building face. And this amendment would, would assist in lessening the impact of driveways, but also provide a secondary benefit in reducing stormwater runoff. The next amendment is to require rear entry garages for lots less than fifty feet in width, and this would impact patio home zoning district, where lots are allowed to be forty feet wide. With front entry garages, much of a patio home lot is paved with driveways, and the front entry garages limit the amount of, of on-street visitor parking that can be provided, which is also a concern when you have the smaller lots in patio home developments. And the proposed amendment would require alleys and rear entry garages for these narrower lots. Now, I think from what we've seen happen in other cities, some builders will choose just to do fifty-foot lots to avoid the additional cost of alleys. It is an additional cost to developers, but we are hoping that we will see a, start to see a mix of patio homes, both rear entry and front entry with, on fifty-foot lots. Those are the amendments that primarily impact front yards and garages. There are several others to review. The next is to reduce the front yard setback to accommodate non-enclosed front porches. And we want to encourage developers to provide usable front porches. And if they do that, of a size minimum depth of seven feet and width of ten feet, then they can reduce the front yard setback. The porch can extend five feet into that twenty-foot front yard setback. They can still do smaller porches, but they just can't take advantage of the reduced setback if they choose to do that. When we met with the builders last week, they thought maybe seven feet was too wide, and, you know, again, if we're, we're trying to make sure there's usable space for a front porch, you could actually put a couple of chairs and, you know, sit on your porch. But if the commission does feel that the seven feet is too wide, then staff would recommend that we not go less than five feet in width for, for a usable front porch. The next amendment is to allow existing residential structures located in non-residential zoning districts to be expanded or rebuilt without approval of a special exception. And currently, the, the city has a lot of property, especially in the central part of the city, that are developed primarily for single-family homes, but they are in commercial zoning districts. And under the terms of the current ordinances, they can't be expanded without a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment, and they can't be rebuilt if they were destroyed, because they're considered to be non-conforming uses. We started to see a number of zoning requests come through for individual lots, where people want to rezone their home from a commercial zoning district to a residential. We're starting to also see banks question the fact that when they're looking at making a loan on a property, as to why it has commercial zoning when it's actually a single-family use or, or other residential use. So we, we're proposing that instead of managing this on a case-by-case basis, that we amend the ordinance that would allow these structures to be improved, expanded, or rebuilt without approval of a special exception. If they're multifamily and condominium structures, and there are a few small multifamily developments scattered in commercial zoning districts, they could be rebuilt, but they couldn't increase the number of units. And if someone wanted to, to build, rebuild their house, they would have to meet the single-family five zoning district requirements. The next proposed amendment is to reduce the side yard setback for existing planted corner lots in the SF five zoning district from fifteen feet to ten feet. And in the older parts of the city where you have SF five zoning, each lot is fifty feet wide. Normally, in a newer subdivision, the developer can build in some extra space on the corner lots, knowing that they have a fifteen-foot setback. But that's not the case in some of the infill properties. And so we are proposing to reduce that side yard setback from fifteen feet to ten feet. Just, you know, as, as an example, when the infill housing overlay district was in place, that side yard setback was five feet. So we're kind of meeting somewhere in the middle of between what it was in the infill district versus what it would be just under single-family five zoning requirements. We think this will be a benefit, benefit to builders and continue to encourage use of these infill lots. And finally, I'm at the last one. Reduce the minimum acreage required to establish a planned development overlay district. And in the current ordinance, depending on the proposed use, the minimum PD size varies. It's five acres for multifamily, it's two acres for commercial. And we're, we're starting to see projects come in that are well-designed, certainly things that the city wants to encourage, but they haven't met these minimum acreage requirements. And just to give you an example, the Central Ward property that you saw a zoning case come in a few months ago, was two point nine acres, and that didn't meet our, our minimum acreage. So we had to address that in the PD. So what we're proposing to do is just make the, to standardize that minimum acreage to two acres for all planned development districts. Now, let me go back to the four proposed amendments that we want to tape, or we're asking you to table. And again, these are ones that we want to take a little additional time to do some research, consult more with our city attorney. The builders also raised some questions in our meeting last week that we want to continue to, to think about. Those would be to remove duplexes and townhouses as allowed uses in the multifamily one, multifamily two zoning districts, reduce the front yard setback if a front entry J-swing garage is provided and certain design requirements are met. And this is where the how, the garage does sit out in front, but it's entered from the side. You have to kind of swing in to the driveway into the garage. Reduce, require standards for residential design and require an architectural control committee for enforcement in larger planned development overlay districts, and then amend the regulations for manufactured home zoning district. We just want, we, we think we need to take a little more time to fully vet these before we bring them back to the commission and council for action. So today, when you make your motion, we would ask that you table those specifically to the October twenty-fifth meeting, and we'll be back to you on that date with the remainder of the amendments. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The recommended motion is in your staff report, and, thank you.
Phyllis, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On the, on the part about reducing the front yard setbacks, which was, I guess, maybe the second item you discussed, as far as reducing the front yard setbacks and the garage placement. So what is the current, is the current front yard setback, is it twenty-five feet?
Yes, sir.
Regardless?
Yes.
Okay. So, so if I do it, which I guess, so most of these, I guess, where they're building it, then the garage is front and maybe the, is at twenty-five feet, and maybe the rest of the house is, is maybe further back?
That's correct.
So in this case, they can still keep the garage, the garage is still going to be the twenty-five feet. It's not changing how far back that is. It's really just allowing then the front to be built up further so that you don't have as much emphasis on the garage?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, I guess, on that same item, I had a question. So this is regarding the front facing. So if you have a corner lot, if the garage is side entry, you know, from the corner, it's just regarding the front, whatever faces, wherever the house is facing then?
Yes, if you had a corner lot with a side entry garage, it would still have to be twenty-five feet setback, because we're trying to make sure that cars don't overhang the sidewalk, but you would have a fifteen-foot side yard for the house itself.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I was referring to, I didn't explain it good enough, to the two, about the two garage door part.
Okay.
Facing the street. So could you have a three or whatever, a two and a one if it's a side entry and it's not, does that, so you're only counting the front then? Correct.
That, that's correct. We're, we're concerned about the streetscape.
Right.
So if you had the benefit of having a corner lot, then you could do your three cars
Yeah.
and access those from the side street.
Gotcha. And then?
I've got a question in that same area with the setbacks. If someone has an existing home that they want to, when they find these changes out, would they be permitted to change their, their setbacks on their fencing?
Um, fencing?
An existing home, you know, if it was separate from, because we talk mainly here about infill. How's that going to impact existing housing if they want to make changes?
Well, if someone had an existing home and they wanted to, let's say, add a garage in, in the front, they would have to meet these requirements. If the house were to be destroyed and rebuilt, they would have to meet these requirements.
Same, same way, yes.
But if you had like an existing home and you wanted to then maybe expand it, you could bring it forward now those five feet, so it's an existing house, and they're like, oh, we want to add on, well, you could add on to the front, maybe increase.
You would be able to benefit from that now.
You could go that five feet.
You'd be able to do that. You wouldn't have to get permission to use the new regulation, I guess.
The only caveat on that is a lot of, most single-family plaits have the front yard setback platted, so they might have to come in and replat to lessen that, that front yard setback on the plat.
I have a question about the non-enclosed front porches. Certainly, we want to encourage non-enclosed front porches, but I'm wondering, what's the resistance on the part of builders over that two feet, seven versus five? Or is it just simply expense of two feet of woods?
Well, I think there's some builders in the, in the room today. You can, you can ask, you can ask them.
Maybe they can speak to that part.
Giving you a break on the setback.
Yeah, every foot counts, so.
I'm sure, maybe they'll speak to that here in the public.
They're giving us that concrete now.
Is it an expense settling resistance?
I'll address it.
Yeah, let's, we'll let it go now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for Phyllis right now?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Phyllis.
We'll come back, maybe after this. All right. Would anyone, who would like to speak first?
Good morning, Commissioner Charlie Shear, four fifteen West Main here in Dennison. Just a couple of things addressing the porches. And I think what Phyllis meant to say is the width that we talked about was ten foot. The depth is what we were talking about, the minimum depth of five. But to answer your question, when you have a porch, let's say it's ten feet, and you, you take two foot times ten is twenty, then you multiply it out times the cost per square foot of what it costs to build a porch, which is not a whole lot different than actual air conditioning footage is now. So with the cost of construction being what it is, that, it's, it's a sizable number on a small house. Larger home, you can absorb the cost into it much easier. But the thing is that this ordinance or this revision is not requiring the builder to build the porch. We don't, he don't have to build the porch if he doesn't want to. I was just saying that if he chooses to do so, which I think would be an asset to the, to the community, you know, the, the move in planning today is more pedestrian-friendly, and that's one of the things I like about front entry garages, is that it keeps people from coming in in the evenings into their, into their, into their little domain and going to the garage and lower the garage door and go in the house, and nobody ever sees them. So there's no real community interaction between, between neighbors. So I think that the front entry kind, kind of helps to offset that a little bit. But the porches will certainly be an asset. I've tried to use them as much as possible, but I think it's, it's definitely a, a good move, and, and, and I think there's a lot of builders that will take advantage of that, being able to move it into the, to the front yard. In, in the setback changes that we're talking about, I think the front's great. I think that's a move towards what's predominantly going on in development today. But in, in the infill district is a problem for us, especially on corner lots. And, and when you think about this right now, the way it's written, if I have a fifty-foot lot with a fifteen-foot setback and a five-foot setback, I've lost twenty feet. Now I'm down to thirty feet, and you want me to put a garage on there. So by the time I get through building the garage and putting the garage door in there that's wide enough to get a vehicle into the garage, then I've lost almost fifty percent of the front elevation of that house. So the garage door predominantly becomes what you're looking at. That's your focal point. So helping to spread that out a little bit. I know I had one plan that we had designed that we were going to put over on, on a lot over on Shepherd, and it was a corner lot. And so we had a front porch that was pretty much sixty-six, sixty, seventy percent of the width of the house that went all the way across the front of it. We lost that. We couldn't put, we couldn't put the house on the lot, so we had to redesign another, another house to fit it, and we lost that porch. So it's going to help having that additional five feet in there. As far as the garage is concerned, I, I don't have a problem with that. I've tried to start doing that on what we've done over the past couple of years, at least a carport, single-car carport or, or a single-car garage. But I think the building community, when we met last week, I think everybody seemed fairly accepting to, to what, what the city's talking about, staff's talking about doing. So my two cents is, yeah, let's do it. Any questions?
I guess, I mean, as far as any of these, I don't know if that's you or maybe you.
I think it's everybody, actually.
I think it's you.
Everybody's kind of feeding on this one.
On any of these, were there any other comments or changes that you're, that you would suggest, or maybe besides the, the feet on the, the, the depth of the front porch part of it, or, or were you saying, I guess, these address kind of?
Well, I think five foot, it, it should be a minimum. Otherwise, it's not usable. And, and it's marginal as to whether or not five foot's actually usable. And, and it's marginal as to whether or not five foot's actually usable. You know, truthfully, if you want to have it, you know, you got to take into consideration that there's probably going to be columns on that porch. They're going to take up a certain amount of that space. Then if you put a chair in there and somebody's sitting in the chair, being able to walk in front of them. So typically, six to seven is, is, you know, when I'm designing, that's my minimum typically on, on the depth. But that's not to say that five foot wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be adequate.
I guess, like you said, it is, it's optional, so it's just, you know, do you want to weigh the...
Right.
The benefit of, of being able to, to reduce that setback, you know, even, even more, which I would say there's cost savings, there's going to be cost savings there versus what it costs to, to put in the porch. But, all right. Any other questions for Mr. Shearer?
And the one thing that I, that I want to clarify is if we're doing a side entry garage, Phyllis, are we still going to require that that garage is twenty-five feet off of the side street?
Except that the S F five zoning district is...
Okay. I mean, what I'm used to over the years is that if I brought us a garage in from the side, and we haven't enforced this in Dennison, maybe we don't have ordinance on the books, but anytime you have a garage, and, and most jurisdictions that I've worked in, a twenty-foot driveway is a requirement, period. So if you bring it in from the side and the setback is fifteen feet in that particular area, you still have to kick that garage in another five feet so you can get that twenty-foot minimum. Now, that's been an, that's an old, an old number. And so with some of the newer vehicles that we're seeing, you know, now, that have been in the news, twenty foot might not be quite enough, but I, I, I don't know why we couldn't do a minimum of twenty foot on the driveway on the side yard if, if, you know. But again, that's just a suggestion. Anything else?
Any other questions for Mr. Shearer, or any other comments, by you?
All right.
All right, we'll excuse you for a minute. Mr. Earnhardt?
Jonathan Earnhardt, Dennison, I mean, one-ten South Houston Avenue, Dennison. I mean, I think they all look pretty good. The only thing I had a question on, I missed the meeting last week, was the multifamily, the M F and the M F two. Where if we're removing two duplexes and townhomes, the majority of these lots that are already there, they're grandfathered in, they're multifamily, they're fifty by a hundred or fifty by one-fifty. The density requires, requirements won't meet three plus, so it's almost like we just need to rezone all those lots to single-family or, or somewhere clarifying there kind of what you can and can't do if there's any benefit to it. Because then you kind of lose those benefits if they're no longer duplexes. It's just going to make, you know, hundreds of lots that are multifamily really just single-family lots. And then you're looking at a different zoning that it really doesn't even apply. So that was the only question I had there. But I, I mean, we didn't see any objections to any of the code changes. We all thought they were good. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda? Nothing from you, Mr. Billby?
No.
All right. All right. Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. Any further discussion by Commission or questions of staff? If not, who wants to endeavor the motion?
You want two motions?
What?
Do you want two motions?
It could be one, it could be one motion if you want.
Okay.
It's just...
Oh. I, I move to approve the, well, I'm not sure I know what to do. Are we, we're going to approve the proposed amendments of the following sections of the zoning ordinance as submitted. They include section twenty-eight point twenty-one, S F twenty, section twenty-eight point twenty-two, S F ten, section twenty-eight point twenty-three, S F seven point five, section twenty-eight point twenty-four, S F five, section twenty-eight point twenty-five, P H, section twenty-eight point twenty-nine, Two-Family, section twenty-eight point sixty-three, Definitions, section twenty-eight point forty-three, Plan Development Overlay District. And continue the public hearing and table action on the following proposed ordinance amendments. Remove duplexes and townhouses, houses as allowed uses for M F one and M F two multifamily zoning district. Reduce the front yard setback if a front entry jay swing garage is provided and design requirements are met. Require standard for residential design and require an architectural control committee for enforcement in larger plan development overlay districts. And lastly, amend the regulations for the manufactured homes zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask that your motion include tabling those four items to the October twenty-fifth P and C meeting?
Did I say that? I guess I didn't say it. To table the, the action on those that I listed last.
To which is to October twenty-five?
Per...
October twenty-two, table it to October twenty-fifth, correct?
Until October twenty-five.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? It is approved. I even had a, even saw a, saw a spectator, I think, voted on it. Old habits die hard.
That happens.
All right, any, and now we're moved to staff updates.
Good morning. We are going to plan to have a training afterward, our Tuesday, September twenty-seventh meeting. So if you could allow about thirty to forty-five minutes extra after our meeting, we are going to, best practice is to have an annual roles and responsibilities and things like that. So that's what it'll include. Chris and Karen are going to assist with part of it, and then I'll present the other part.
So you said thirty minutes after the twenty-seventh meeting?
Correct. And I, at this point in time, we don't know, the meeting should not be as long as today. So it'll be probably about the normal amount of time, but if you could just build that into your schedules for that day, we would appreciate it. And if we hit that forty-five minute mark, we can stop and continue on at the next meeting if we need to, but it won't be part of the meeting, it'll just be a training afterwards.
Thank you.
All right. Any other staff updates? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move each year.
You didn't have to read that one, did you? All right, do I have a second? Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at ten-thirty-seven.